All right, we have seven. So we will begin tonight's work session, tonight's budget work session. We have three hours allocated for this. I want to say I am very pleased with the budget development process for FY '20. Not only is this our second year of full funding from the county, but it also allows the school board to make some decisions about staffing initiatives. It's nice to be able to have decisions about what to add to the budget instead of what to take away for the first time since most of us have been on the board. And I'm really confident that this '20 budget is going to do good things for FCPS and its students. This is also the first time that the budget is aligned to our strategic plan. And I know the school board and staff has spent a lot of time working on the strategic plan, and it's a key step to aligning the budget to the plan, so I'm glad we're making progress on that. Also, I am looking forward to the continued development of the partnership that is great between Dr. Braybrand and Brian Hill, our school boards and our Board of Supervisors. So I know that we are working to invest in every child, as Dr. Braybrand says, by name and by need. So tonight, we will begin this process. Remember, board members, we are going to be using the timer. The timer is at the top of the table. I will be starting it and stopping it. So you have about three minutes to ask your questions. And staff, also, I think the best way, the way this works best is if you allow the board members to get their questions out, and then you answer after that, and then that time is not taken away from the school board members, a lot at three-minute time. I have, today, we have lots of staff here. We have Lee Burden, our Assistant Superintendent for Department of Financial Services, Marty Smith, our Chief Operating Officer, Teresa, let's see, is Teresa here? Teresa and Sloan are both here. And Francisco's here. We've got a whole team up here. So what we might want to do is just, for the record, if you're going to be speaking on it, you know, state your name the first time you speak, so people who are listening to this know who that is. And I now will turn it over to staff, unless Dr. Braybrand has something.
Ms. Darnett Kofax, if I could just add one little reminder to all of my colleagues. If you have a next step as a result of this discussion, please clearly state to the board clerks that what you are suggesting should be a next step, so that they can appropriately record it.
Thank you. Dr. Braybrand?
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Before I turn it over to Marty and his team, I just want to say, again, we're so excited to have a budget process where the board here at the end talks about what they want to do to enhance resources for schools and enhance this budget in alignment with the strategic plan. We're thrilled with that. I think what you're really going to see today, you did a lot of work with amendments to the budget back in January. You also had some follow-on motions, and we really want to just sort of do a quick review that brings you this evening, for the first part, all the amendments and the costing for them, how they align to the strategic plan, all the follow-on motions you asked for, and to the degree that you asked for additional analysis and work around those and implications for this year, so that you're aware of this year's implications are available. And then, and we have a presentation that really merges and has all of that for you. And then after that, to see what questions you have, so that you really are best prepared either later this evening or on Thursday, to start saying, what do you want to see as the final things that come forward for the additions in the budget? So we look forward to it. And Marty, I know you and your team have worked tremendously hard, so I'll turn it over to you.
Certainly, thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Good evening. We are very happy to be here tonight to talk about our amendments and follow-on motions and provide more information to you. Before we get into the presentation, I do want to thank my colleagues on the leadership team for their help and support as we've developed the budget this year. Certainly thank the board for your input, and kudos to Ms. Burden and Ms. Wiggington and the budget staff for their efforts in pulling the budget together this year. We've answered close to 100 budget questions from both the Board of Supervisors and the school board this budget cycle. Staff have been heavily engaged, heavily involved, and we have a very good presentation today where we're going to provide you a brief bit of information on all of the follow-on motions and amendments. And then we have some presentations related to Title I, related to staffing, and also presentations related to equity positions. And lastly, I'm leaving out, and recruitment, yes. And Dr. Nixon is sitting right next to me, of course. So we're very happy to get started, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Burden. She's going to be responsible for a majority of the presentation this evening, and then pass it off to those individuals when necessary. So Ms. Burden.
Good evening. So attached to the board item are three documents, a PowerPoint with all of the amendments and follow-ons described, which I'm going to go over tonight, as well as my colleagues are going to help me out on some of the instructional stuff, and an amendment document with narrative about each of the amendments, and a follow-on document also with narrative.
I need to say one thing.
Okay. And now Mr. Smith is going to talk again.
I have one thing to say. So tonight is the first of three meetings that we have focused on the budget. Tonight, we're getting the larger presentation, and you, as board members, will have an opportunity this Thursday to weigh in once again on the budget, and then we have another budget meeting scheduled for the 16th. Ms. Corbett Sanders earlier asked you to be very clear about your next steps, and if there are questions that you need answered for this Thursday's meeting, it would be very important for us to know that as well, so that we can work a little more quickly on the turnaround for those priority answers.
Okay, so this slide is just a summary of the amendments that have been proposed thus far. There is one addition to the list. At the bottom, we have included a restraint and seclusion placeholder for you all to discuss. We provided linkage with the strategic plan goals, the estimated cost of the amendment, and the number of positions, if that's applicable. Some numbers may have changed slightly since the ones that you saw in February. The costing has been refined due to better information over the last couple of months. So the first proposed motion is about the Get to Green program, and it is requesting that we add two full-time permanent specialist positions in instructional services and one full-time coordinator position in facilities. And, you know, the Get to Green program is the environmental stewardship program that promotes student learning in action, and this would provide the program with much-needed permanent stability. Currently, there's one traded 11-month resource teacher position in ISD, an hourly employee that's been supporting the Get to Green in a temporary capacity, and an FTE, facilities employee sits in ISD, working collaboratively with that resource teacher. So this would replace that with three permanent FTEs at a cost of .4 million. The next item is the AART teachers. This motion proposes that we provide each Title I elementary school with a minimum of one AART position. There are 46 Title I elementary schools. Thirteen of them have a centrally funded AART position, and 33 have a centrally funded .5 position. So if we wanted to round off those .5s to a full position at the 33 schools that don't have a full time, that would be 1.6 million and 16.5 FTEs. Now, full implementation of a 1.0 AART position at all of the elementary schools would require an additional 47.5 positions or an additional 4.6 million. Living wage. This proposes an increase in living wage to 15.27, which is about a 3% increase. It costs about .2 million dollars. It links up with premier workforce. There are some employees on Schedule AH and CIS that would be affected by this. Everybody is scheduled to get their salaries raised by 1% in fiscal '20, except for the teachers, which their 1% is included in their enhancement. And there has been a lot of discussion about this, and I think it's important to note that the county, at its pre-markup last Friday, included a 2.1% MRA, up from the 1% that was originally proposed. And so as a result, their living wage is going to $15.14. So when we get to the follow-on motion about asking for a multi-year study of this, we can talk more about that. But we do have a desire to link up with the county. We, you know, certainly wouldn't want to be more than they're paying for living wage. So we can talk about that more. In fact, we've, we've costed several options that we have available, if you're interested in that. The world language expansion is to provide 16 FTEs to fund world language positions at the academies. Five of those, two language programs per site at selected academies. Enhanced student access to ASL at Fairfax and development of additional online campus offerings. It's not feasible for all high schools to staff multiple levels of 12 languages, and so this is to increase equitable access, and it would allow students increased geographic access to language programming. Of course, this is a strategic plan goal, student success. It costs about 1.6 million and would fund 16 positions. This next, I'm not used to clicking for myself. The next one is a 1% market scale adjustment instead of a 1% bonus. We've been talking about this ever since it was proposed, and it's, you know, there's a specific subset that the MSA, I mean, that the bonus is based on, the 783 employees who otherwise would get no salary increase whatsoever. And this proposed motion asks that we look at providing a market scale adjustment to those employees instead of the 1% bonus. So there are additional costs with that, because then it becomes, those dollars become salary-sensitive, they're subject to VRS, they're subject to FICA, they're subject to all of those salary-sensitive categories. In addition to that, if, just adding 1% to Step 23 is pretty costly, because suddenly everybody who is at Step 22, who is already getting a step increase by going from 22 to 23, and an enhancement, if any, those will also be, get the 1% too. It wouldn't just be this subset of 783, because if you just add 1% to 23, then everybody on 23 is going to get that, and everybody from 22 to 23 as well is going to get that. So it becomes costly if you just add 1%. So what we would have to do to make that work is literally add another step to the schedule, a Step 24. And of course, that Step 24, and we've not costed it, has long-term repercussions, because then you have essentially a workforce of 16,000 who assumes that there are going to be at least 24 steps until the end of time. So there are long-term costs with that. We haven't, haven't costed that, but we do know that it would be quite costly if all of the staff on 22 and 23 got an additional 1%. And this just reflects the difference between of those 783 staff members getting a 1% bonus or a 1% MSA. So it's basically the salary-sensitive piece is what the 200,000 is. As far as custodial staffing goes, this proposal is that we provide an additional nine custodial positions. The placement of those positions are indicated here at Stenwood, Columbia, Little Run, Franklin Sherman, Vienna, Cedar Lane, Quander Road, Franconia, and Kings Glen. This falls under the strategic plan goal of resource stewardship, costs about a half a million dollars. And this is a movement towards the APPA staffing standard that was outlined in the Gibson report back in fiscal '12. We would need, well, this is just a small step in that. We also have a follow-on motion that talks about the Gibson report and the impact of that, that we'll be discussing later on. But this is just for the nine positions. The facilities trade staffing provides an additional 10 facilities position, eight trades positions, one security position, and one boundary coordinator. They're listed here as well. Resource stewardship, again, is a strategic plan goal. It's about 1 million and 10 positions. And again, this too is a beginning point in getting the trade staffing similar to what the APPA standard is that was outlined in the Gibson report. This next motion is about the movable wall safety sensors. The proposal is to provide safety-stopping devices for movable walls. There's a total of 127 motorized partitions at schools. You know, we've done, we've made a few, quite a few changes to improve safety. The warning signs have been posted, switches have been relocated, and partition opening guidelines have been provided. The sensors would automatically, these sensors, if funded, would automatically stop the doors from operating if a person or obstacle was detected in the path. This also falls under resource stewardship, and the cost is about $600,000. But as a one-time cost, staff recommends that this item be funded from fiscal 19-year-end funds, and then that would give you a little bit of flexibility as far as the 6 million for staffing initiatives that we're talking about tonight. The next item is the behavior intervention. Teachers provide five teachers, one for each region. Currently, we have 17 bits serving an average of 12 to 14 schools each. Additional teachers would allow more direct and timely services to be provided to schools to support students and teachers, and of course, they provide services to both general ed students and students with disabilities, as well as professional development to administrators, school staff, and parents. This falls under caring culture, and the cost is about a half a million dollars and five FTEs. And this last amendment is the one that staff added, and this is a restraint and seclusion placeholder. You know, obviously, we need to provide resources to assist in monitoring and reporting instances of restraint and seclusion. Schools need greater support. We need greater PD, and staff is currently identifying, you know, what resources would be needed. This falls under student success and caring culture, and we don't have a cost or positions yet. You know, we have some estimates, but at this point, we're not, you know, putting, those aren't ready for primetime. Do you want to go on to the follow-ons?
Yes, yes, please.
The next slide is a summary of the proposed follow-ons. Again, linkage with the strategic plan goals is provided, any particular requirements or resources, a tentative timeline and costing, if applicable. So we'll try to get through this quickly. Dr. Nixon is going to provide information about teacher recruitment and retention. Then Ms. Walts will go over Title I, followed by Dr. Duran, who will provide info on the two follow-ons, one concerning equity, and another follow-on about health support at the community schools. I'll provide a short summary on the staffing standards and the changes made for fiscal '20, and then we have, you know, a half a dozen other follow-ons that I'll go over briefly, and then we can take questions.
Helen Nixon, Human Resources. So an overview of our teacher recruitment and retention slide here. When we look at the reasons that teachers may leave the profession, the most recurring anecdotes that we find in the research shows that inadequate teacher preparation, a lack of support for new teachers, challenging work conditions, dissatisfaction with compensation, pursuit of better career opportunities and/or personal reasons. We know we're very fortunate in our, in our district to have the work of Kathleen Walts and her team through the Great Beginnings programs, and the coaching and mentoring opportunities that our teachers have. And so we know that the continued professional development is something that is essential to making sure that our first-year teachers and our, or new to Fairfax as a veteran teacher, and certainly our first-year teachers feel supported in those mentoring opportunities. Challenging work conditions can mean anything from a teacher that is experiencing classroom management behavior issues, to planning, to pacing, and those are the kinds of opportunities where coaches and mentors would step in to help. Pursuit of better career opportunities. We know that with this kind of growing millennial workforce, some of the trend data demonstrates that they will have various careers in, you know, in the trajectory of their career. And one thing that we know that we need to get better at is making certain that, as part of our recruiting process, we are also demonstrating to teachers that while teaching certainly is one pathway, there are ways to grow a career above and beyond teaching in a school division through administration, through working in the central office, curriculum development, and the like. So we know that when we are having those recruiting conversations, we are showing our recruits that there really is a career pathway in plan for them as well. In terms of our recruitment strategies, several weeks ago, when we discussed our Goal Three Premier Workforce, we talked about some of the innovative things that we are doing in Human Resources to examine how we're reimagining the way that we are recruiting. Certainly, we are, we've gone to over 70 job fairs. We have also hosted our own. We had a recent job fair this past Saturday. Mr. McDonald can talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We have our Back to Fairfax programs, and certainly, great intentionality around Growing Our Teachers for Tomorrow program. We have a commitment also to partner outreach, working with our community partners in the NAACP. We had a very successful evening last week with a Korean-American organization, and this week, we are working with the Latino Chamber of Commerce as well. So we really are working toward this reimagining, knowing that we cannot do a traditional recruiting plan, but that we are out in the community, we are uplifting the narrative around the teaching profession, and that we are looking for career changers, and we are looking for our community partners to help us spread this message of, let's get our kids passionate about teaching, and let's get our parents talking about what a great opportunity we have in some of our programs at our high schools via T4T. Do you want to say something about Saturday?
Sure. Just. Good evening. This past Saturday, we hosted our April Job Fair, and we had quite a, quite a bit of interest. We had 586 individuals attend the event this past Saturday, and 46 of our schools were represented at the event. There was lots of interaction. Schools had an opportunity to network with these individuals and then conduct interviews. We're very hopeful that, over the coming weeks, the connections that were made will pay off in terms of hires. We did offer several contracts to individuals at the event, with them accepting, and those numbers are low right now, because schools are conducting reference checks and ensuring that they want to bring the rest of the folks onboard. So we're hopeful that we'll have that number increase steadily over the next couple of weeks, and we can provide an update in a future Braybrand briefing, once we see a better response in terms of what happened. But lots of excitement, lots of folks from all over the country were present. We had folks flying in from the West Coast. We had folks coming in from Florida and all over the Midwest to learn about Fairfax and really wanting to join our team. We had an opportunity to partner with several groups as well. Members from our teachers' associations were present and helped us to spread the good news about what's happening here in Fairfax. Folks from the Troops to Teachers Organization were present as well, to talk about opportunities for folks to transition from military careers into teaching careers, as well as folks from within our office, to talk about all the great benefits that we offer. The Great Beginnings program talked about the supports that we provide teachers that are new to our organization, to ensure that they understood that we were fully invested in them and had a strong desire for them to join our team.
When we consider our recruitment strategies, I know there were questions around how much it would cost in terms of building the external and internal recruitment pipelines, the expansion for the Teachers of Tomorrow program, and the support of the Back to Fairfax program, which roughly, the estimate is about 1.2 million dollars for all of those initiatives together in our Human Resources shop. The other thing in terms of our premier workforce, our strategic focus area, was the compensation of market competitiveness from 95% to 105%. And I know one of the questions was, was that enough? You know, was being in that range going to be enough in terms of making Fairfax County competitive? And what is that philosophical discussion around, how far above 105 did we want to
In communication with Title I colleagues across the state, divisions are including more secondary schools, and these schools receive an allocation proportionate to their size, which typically means more funding than what would be provided in elementary school. This graph shows the Title I division free and reduced meal thresholds. You can see that Fairfax at 45% is at the lower end of thresholds when compared to other surrounding jurisdictions. In communicating with other Title I leaders, we learned that with the fluctuations in Title I funding, other divisions have had to increase their thresholds for Title I eligibility. In Fairfax, we have experienced those same fluctuations in Title I funding from VDOE and remain uncertain of funding for fiscal year 21, and therefore, we are working to determine our next steps. In fiscal year 21, we predict additional secondary schools might be eligible for inclusion in Title I. At the same time, we want to ensure our schools, with the highest levels of free and reduced meals, will be able to continue to supplement their FCPS school-based budgets with the staffing and initiatives that will support student success. LT has recommended that the Title I free and reduced meal threshold for the 2021 school year be increased to 55% to protect our schools that have the highest concentrations of poverty and to accommodate any secondary schools which we are required to serve. In 1920, we will have nine schools that will benefit from the grandfather clause, which means that they will continue their Title I eligibility for one year and then exit Title I in 2021. We propose that these schools receive operating funding to maintain some supports. If operating funds are approved for these schools, principals have identified a priority for staffing, and that includes instructional coaches and resource teachers. The schools that are included in the grandfather clause include Lake Anne, Rose Hill, Mason Crest, Springfield Estates, Center Ridge, Washington Mill, Forest Edge, London Town, and Timber Lane. Not included on the slide, but is part of the follow-on motion, includes positions that are funded with Title I money in support of remediation and enrichment. For fiscal year 20, we have 123.5 positions allocated, and this includes STEAM, AART, Math and Literacy Intervention, Instructional Coaches, and Math and Literacy Leaders. A total of $275,845 has been allocated for before and after-school programs, as well as summer intervention and enrichment.
With regards to the equity of opportunity for enrichment and after-school activities, there has been some preliminary work with our principals and our DSAs to understand and know that inequities do exist in the availability of enrichment activities, sports, after-school programs, and field trips, particularly at elementary school. We also see a lot of inequities at our high school with regards to equipment, for coaching equipment, the ability to replace uniforms on a regular basis, the ability to access tournament play, and also scoreboards. With regards to our middle schools, because we do have funding from the county, we don't necessarily see as great of inequities in that aspect, but we do see inequities with access to transportation and also to making sure that we have more consistency around the offering of those programs. We are establishing a work group of principals and other stakeholders, which will include DSAs, members of booster clubs, parents, as well as students from our secondary schools to really look at and provide more input, because as the items I just indicated a minute ago primarily came from our principals and DSAs as preliminary findings of what those inequities are. At this point, what we are exploring, and we believe would be the best option to provide equity amongst all of our schools, is a needs-based per-pupil allocation for discretionary needs at our high-poverty schools that would be included as part of the fiscal year 21 budget. This would be in alignment with the way that Title I funds are distributed, in that we will look at our highest need of poverty schools and tier allocations accordingly. Given the complexity of what this topic involves and an understanding what those inequities are, it will take some time to develop it. So at this point, we don't have any estimated cost, but we're also not recommending anything included in fiscal year 20. This would be a recommendation that comes in fiscal year 21 budget, which we will be bringing to you later in the fall. Our next follow-on motion dealt with the concern and question around health support for our community schools. As you all know, we do have two community school pilots at Whitman Middle School and Mount Vernon Woods Elementary School. As we think about the two community schools, we understand from best practices that those two pilots do not include a key component which involves health support. Part of the reason behind that is our two pilot schools were not funded from the county or the school system. They were done through partnerships, and as a part of those partnerships, we were not able to fully fund the entire practices that would go in place for community schools. We have visited community schools in other jurisdictions nearby, as well studied them, and we understand that the health component is a key component of, of the community school model. When we think about our situation in Fairfax, it requires a little bit of a deeper dive because the way we provide our health supports is in partnership with our county. We also currently provide our partnerships in our county through the purposes of nurses and school health assistants. But as we look at the community school model nationally, we understand that having a nurse in a school, in a community school would only allow that nurse to provide services to the students. Whereas, community schools around the nation, if you want to have a true community model, that would be potentially providing health services and supports to families and the community. So tonight, preliminarily, we do have to continue to consider what we can do to partner with SCIPP and with our county partners. But with county concurrence, one possibility that would be a step towards this, but again, it would not be the full model, is to have a nurse instead of a school health assistant at those two pilot schools. As you can see on the slide, that would be an estimated cost of $107,000 because it would be two nurses less the cost of the two school health assistants. But I want to clarify that if we do that, that would provide additional health support in line with the community school model, but it would not be the true full community school model because those two nurses would only be able to provide supports to the students, not the community and the parents like we have seen in our best practices. An amendment to the fiscal year 20 school budget, school board advertised budget would have to be initiated, and that would be, as I said, $107,000.
Staffing standards. As you all recall, the fiscal 20 budget includes staffing formula changes in an effort to align budget staffing with current school board class-size regulations. Staffing standards are important because they provide a base level of equity, budget predictability, efficiency and simplification, and compliance with state standards. A realignment of the elementary staffing standard is intended to link policy with the practice of having all elementary class sizes below 26. And allocating positions to meet class-size requirements before the school year begins greatly assists principals in budgetary planning and staffing their schools. As you know, we funded the, this change in the staffing standard to provide the positions in the budget instead of after the, the budget's adopted with the fiscal 20 staffing reserve by transferring 220 positions from the staffing reserve over to the elementary staffing, which was happening anyway, but through the staffing reserve after recruitment later in the year. So again, this allows us to front-load the staffing that would otherwise have come from the staffing reserve. This chart basically shows, and this is, this comes straight from the budget document, it's in the appendix, the elementary staffing standard before, or what it was in fiscal 19, and what it is in the fiscal 20 proposed budget. And basically, the new staffing standard uses a divisor that ranges from 20 to 26, and additional, with additional staffing added for FRM percentages that range from 20 to 70%. So that the largest schools with the least free and reduced are calculated at 26 to 1, and the smallest schools with the greatest free and reduced are staffed at 20 to 1. If you look at the next chart, it gives you an example of the simplification of the staffing formula using a lookup table based on free and reduced and school size. So grades 1 through 6, 600 students, and 15% FRM would get 24 teachers as their base allotment, dividing by 25. But if the FRM of that same school went up to 35%, they would get an additional two teachers. And then if it went up to 75%, they would get an additional six teachers. And school size is a necessary factor because the smaller schools don't have as much flexibility to make adjustments at individual grade levels when class sizes fall outside the current class-size regulations. And so we reset that to make sure that it takes that into consideration because obviously, you know, with a smaller school, they just don't have as many groupings of 26 to 1, and so it's more difficult. And we've also reset the base staffing from 25 to 20% in an effort to begin providing support when free and reduced saturation begins to have a more noticeable impact, and also further distinguish the top end of the staffing formula by extending all the way to 70% in large schools and through 50% in the smaller schools. The old formula stopped at 40%. So that, that was a change as well. The next item is the follow-on about instructional assistance salary restorations. I guess back in 2000, they were linked to the bachelor lane teacher salaries and provided a salary of 50% of the BA teacher lane. So redesign of that CIS scale, or the instructional aid scale, linking that to the teacher scale would be required. In the FY18 compensation study, the IA salaries were set based on the goal of 95 to 105% of the market average. We did look at FY19 WAB data because that's the most current data we have, which shows the beginning salary and the maximum salary of instructional aids for all of the divisions in the metropolitan area. And we have lost a little ground at the midpoint and maximum, but the minimum remains within the target percentage at 97.5% of the average beginning hourly for all of the surrounding divisions. A multi-year phase-in would be necessary due to, you know, fiscal uncertainty and the potential cost. Our estimated cost based on that the beginning step would be $25,000, a BA lane is $50,000, so 25 or half would be the beginning piece of the IA scale, and it would go all the way up to $44,000, which would be half at the top of the, the BA lane. And the cost of making such a change is pretty expensive at $7.4 million. So that's likely something that we'd want to phase in over time. The next item is the living wage review. The schedules that would be impacted are Schedule A, which has custodians, office assistants, trades; Schedule H, which is drivers, parent liaisons, and food services; and then, of course, the instructional assistants, public health assistants would also be affected. These scales were redesigned in fiscal 18 and 19 to provide pay ranges, again, within our target of 95 to 105% of the market average, and to provide larger step increases between 4% and 4.3% at the beginning of the scale was also part of the strategy. And of course, you know, there's a lot of living wages out there, so determining what is the appropriate living wage for Fairfax County would be something that we would want to take a look at. And it would require a redesign of the scales and, of course, have a compounding effect across the other steps of each salary schedule. We also believe this would require a multi-year phase-in due to fiscal uncertainty. We have quite a few varying living wage costing that we've done as part of this budget development process, and, you know, if you're interested in that, I can give you some more information on that during the question portion. And then the last follow-on is about a multi-year plan to align with the APPA staffing standards for custodial and trade staffing. The staffing standard formula for K-12 facilities is one per 49,000 feet, and custodial is one per about 23,000. So we would need quite a few additional trades positions and custodial positions to meet these APPA standards. One of the things that we have on our agenda for fiscal 21 is to begin developing staffing standards, formal staffing standards for some of our other departments like facilities, custodians. Right now, even though we do have formulas that we use that take into consideration the square footage, the enrollment, the number of staff, those sorts of things, that's something that we want to take a look at because development of appropriate staffing formulas for facilities would also allow replenishment of the deficit in trades and custodial staffing, and also, of course, improve budgetary planning. Anytime you include, you have staffing ratios, that improves your budgetary planning. Timeline to begin would be fiscal 21, and the estimated cost of all of this is $35.6 million.
That's it. All right. Thank you, team. I, I just want to clarify about tonight, and, and we have another budget session scheduled for Thursday. So tonight is the time to ask questions of staff, of each other, and also a time to possibly, maybe not in your first round of questions, but in another opportunity to talk, to advocate, or to explain to colleagues why your amendment is something you, our follow-on motion is something that should be supported. I, as you can see, we have put a lot on the table. We, this is, again, the first year that many of us have been able to have this opportunity to, to ask for additional monies for things which we feel are important, and that's why we scheduled two work sessions for that because at tonight's work session, I kind of see as like that free-form opportunity, ask questions of staff, each other, and, and explain to, if we get to the chance, to chance to do that. If we don't, then we have Thursday night as well to do that. It's the same format, but I want to make sure we do touch on each of the proposed amendments as well as the follow-on motions during this two-day work session because this is the time to do that type of hard work. And Dr. Braybrand, you'd like to speak?
If I could just do one other thing to help clarify as you begin. Mr. Smith, can you remind me, or Ms. Burden, the amount that we saved for the strategic staffing initiatives in this budget was, it was a little bit over six. What was the number? Six million. So from amendments, you can see the total cost of amendments is 6.6 million, right? One thing I want to let you know, you see about restraint and seclusion, a placeholder is TBD. We have staff reviewing that right now, and I, I will have that information for you on Thursday. Okay? I do want to just review it. We'll have it for you all on Thursday. Information about restraint and seclusion. Excuse me? Any information in terms of additional resources, we think, that would need to be brought forward for next year's budget around restraint and seclusion? That's one. The, the other part, and you already saw, follow-on motions that we thought had cost implications for this year, like the school nurse proposal, you've just seen all those costs, right? That's, for example, the nurse was a $100,000. So if you wanted to do the IA to teacher, that's $7 million. So there's places on both the amendments and the follow-ons for you to look for dollar values, and ultimately, what we love is the board to converge on the follow-ons and amendments and fit within the, the $6 million that we have. And I don't know, is that a good way to wrap up and then let you all?
Well, that's a good, good way to, to wrap it up. We also want to point out that we are recommending that the $600,000 for the movable doors be one-time funding, so that frees up dollars as well when you look at that $6.6 million price tag that we have for our current follow-ons, for our current amendments, that does free up some budget dollars as well.
You know what? I'm just going to take personal privilege since you brought that up right now. What I would like to know, though, for me, time is of the essence to get this in place. If we use those dollars, if we take those dollars out of this budget and put them into year-end, what will allow us to, to get these sensors on these movable walls in the most expedient manner? What's the difference in time if we wait until year-end versus putting it? What's the difference in time if we wait until year-end versus putting it?
I mean, a couple of weeks. The budget would start on July 1, of course, and year-end is like the end of July. But Mr. Plattenberg may be able to respond to what kind of timeline, so it may not matter one way or the other if things have to be ordered. And, I mean, I don't know exactly what's involved.
And I guess my other question is, is there an opportunity to do amendment to third-quarter review to get those monies as soon as possible?
I think we'll work with the board. If the board deems it's a priority to find the dollars to expend sooner than later so that we can get these schools with those sensors and all those partition walls, we will work with the board and figure that out.
Yeah. I mean, amending third quarter doesn't really work because that becomes part of a larger county package that they've already dealt with. But, you know, we could take it out of flexibility reserve and then reimburse that with year-end, which is the same thing.
And that's certainly, from an operational standpoint, from the facility side, it certainly will accelerate things that would allow us to go ahead and get the advanced work done so that, you know, our temp would be to get it all completed over this summer. And the earlier advance we have is something like that aligned with what Ms. Burden just recommended and what Dr. Brayband had mentioned certainly would put us in a position to be successful in that regard.
All right. I'll just tell my colleagues now, if that's the way to get it there fastest, that would be my advocacy to take it out of the flexibility reserve, so.
So Ms. Darnett Kovacs, should we put that as a next step right now?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. That would be a next step, yes. To allocate $600,000 from the flexibility reserve to fund the sensors for the movable walls. And we're starting our questions. Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. I appreciate that. Ms. Heinz, you're first on the list, followed by Ms. Evans.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I especially appreciate the narratives on the amendments and follow-ons. It's very helpful for us to remember where we were at, where we were when we were talking about this. I have a few questions. I'll give them to you and then give you time to answer. So thank you. Let's see, on Slide 7, my question about that one was, and that is for the bonuses for employees. I'm just wondering if I could get sort of a refresher on how long, how many years we would have to keep giving these bonuses to make people whole? Because it's my understanding that this is how we are still adjusting from the salary adjustment that we made. I mean, I could be wrong. I just want to know, how far out in the future would we continue to give these sort of bonuses at the top end to make people whole? So that's one question. And if I'm confused, please tell me. Other question is Slide 11. This is for the behavior support employees, right? Behavior intervention teachers. I'm wondering if this is or could be part of our restraint and seclusion response. So I just want to know how that might fit into that other budget item that we're going to be considering. I wonder, when we talk about the 95 to 105% comparing our teacher salaries with 95 to 105% of the going rate, just wondering, just throwing this out there, if we've thought about comparing our teacher salaries with professions that require the same preparation? Because when you look at, I just saw something, someone did a survey that found Virginia is very low nationally when you compare teacher salaries with similar, with professions that require similar amount of preparation and education. So that's another way to look at it. I don't know if any school system is looking at it that way, but it's something I thought I would throw out. And then on the door sensors, I just want to, I think that sounds like a good fix, but I assume that we're still talking about taking it out of year-end to replenish the reserve rather than take, rather than putting it on to the 2020 budget. Is that your thinking?
Yes, but by taking it out of the flexibility reserve, we allow the process to get started.
I totally agree with that. I'm just wondering, then, how do we put it back in the?
How do we replenish it? I think since it's one-time, once it's one-time funding, it would be year-end.
We replenish from year-end.
Okay, all right. And I would just say that I am still very much in favor of our get-to-green positions and the AART positions in Title I. So I'm still going to be advocating for those. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Kiesgum.
Oh, oh.
Okay. On the bonus, you're confused. Well, you said, "Tell me if I'm confused." So, yeah, you're confused. Historically, if, I mean, this, a lot of divisions do this. You know, folks at the top of the scale wouldn't receive any increase if you don't do a wholesale market scale adjustment to the entire schedule. And with the, for the non-teaching positions, we did do a 1% MSA across those scales. So no matter where you are on those scales, you will at least get 1%. But on the teacher scale, since their market scale adjustment was built into the enhancement, that top step was not going to receive any increase at all. And so traditionally, what most divisions, how they handle that is provide a 1% bonus so, or some other percentage, so those employees at least get something. Fairfax has included that as part of a follow-on motion the last couple of years, I think in fiscal '18 and fiscal '19. And so for fiscal '20, instead of just waiting for you all to add that or try to fund it, we just included it in the superintendent's proposed budget.
And to follow on with that, if we are fully implementing the teacher scale next year, then that goes away. We won't have that issue in the future. We'll no longer have individuals at the top of the scale as long as there is a 1% or any percentage MSA. So this is a unique year coming so that, once we're fully implemented, we will not have individuals in this same situation.
That's the question I was trying to ask. Thank you.
Do you have, I had a couple of other questions. Is there anything else?
There was a question about restraint and seclusion, those, the positions.
Sure. Ms. Heinz, I believe your question was, could that be added to the restraint and seclusion package or response? I think we are definitely having conversations about that. Some of our, some of my desires would be to add additional bits to that package where we would have one per pyramid.
There seems to be confusion over this. So Jane, you started taking the list before I put it together. I'm just going to let Karen, and then you, and then you, okay? So Karen Corbett, followed by Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Kiesgum. All right. And, no, who else is on deck so we know? I think just about everybody's on deck. After that, we have Illyon, followed by Megan, followed by Dahlia. Okay? Excellent. You want to push the three-minute and I'll get through it. First, I want to give you?
About 99 minutes. I'm going to reset.
Okay, we'll reset it and go for three. No. All the way to the end. There we go. Now that, okay, thank you. Just my philosophy, which is that we really need to focus on funding those positions and those items on this budget that are student-focused and have the most impact on our students. And so I will be advocating that we do not wait until fiscal year '21 to address the concerns of the IA community. Our IAs are perhaps the, amongst the most important people that our children interact with every single day, and especially for our exceptional students who have disabilities, the IAs play a critical role. And so I believe that we need to move that funding up earlier rather than waiting until next year. Just to give you a perspective, at $25,000, which is the low end of the scale, if we were to go 50%, it would be $18 an hour for teacher, or for IAs. And so please keep that into account. And I would like to have a proposal from you all as to how you would do a first tranche of funding our IAs at a higher level at 50% by Thursday, because that's what the motion asked for. Additionally, I fully support the AARTs in the Title I schools. I am a little concerned about, I'm a lot concerned about the language on Page 12, the restraint and seclusion. I'm concerned about the language, which seems to focus on monitoring and reporting, but does not, that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for the best practices of how to best serve the needs of these children that are experiencing or have experienced restraint and seclusion. And so I can't support anything that says that it's for greater support for monitoring and reporting. It seems to presume an outcome of the independent analysis that we've asked for as well as the work of the task force. If it were to put additional funding in behavioral interventionist, then I could support that fully, but not for reporting and monitoring. Additionally, Title I, I'm very concerned that we're increasing the level of Title I requirement to 55%. That's 20% over what it used to be and would significantly impact many of our students. As to the equity of opportunity, I look forward to that. That's wonderful, good work. And then with the needs-based staffing, I'm a little concerned on Page 23. Last year, we had a needs-based staffing that was at 19, and now we're at 20. And when we're taking away Title I funding, we shouldn't be addressing it additionally with the needs-based staffing. And then, and that's on Page 27, the formal staffing standards, I believe. Are you, okay, and I do support having your formal staffing review.
Anything else you can comment on?
And that's it.
Nope. Thanks. Got your three minutes. All right.
Do you know what my next steps are? The one next, the big one next, there are two. One is having the, having a plan for beginning to address the IA salaries so that we get to 50% and that the initial tranche to support it has to happen, should happen this year. And then the second is on the restraint and seclusion, that any funding should be going to supporting the behavioral intervention and communication needs of these students. It should not be focused on monitoring and reporting. So please come back with a plan that focuses on actual support of these students in that way.
Yes. You'll see some of that with the recommendation. We'll change some of that wording.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Next, I have Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Kiesgum. Thank you. I, first of all, want to applaud you for the work, particularly Dr. Duran, on the equity in after-school and extracurriculars. I think you're doing excellent work, and I very much appreciate the task force or the stakeholders group that you're forming. I think that's going to be critical to the long-term discussion on that. And I think you're, I think you're heading in the right direction on this with a per pupil needs-based at our highest poverty school seems to be a reasonable way to go. Like some of the other things, I would prefer not to wait entirely for fiscal '21 if we can help it. And one of the things, I just want to alert my colleagues, I want to have conversations with everyone about whether, particularly with staff, about ways we might move forward either in fiscal '20 or at year-end. There may be a few discreet things that we could do to get going to remedy some of the worst discrepancies. So I want to have more conversation about that and possibly come up with a plan for that. And again, whether it's in fiscal '20 or at year-end, again, I welcome my colleagues' thoughts on that, how we might move forward. On the needs-based staffing, this is something that we really need to focus on. We absolutely need to know exactly what we're doing with this. So a next step that I would request is to look at the comparison of every elementary school with what they would have received in staffing under the old formula and what they would receive under the proposed new formula. I think we absolutely need to see that. I have some of the same concerns that Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned. I do want to see what the actual impact would be because I do have some concerns with what I'm seeing. But perhaps, once I see the actual numbers, those fears will be allayed. Yes, that, did you get that as a next step? Yes, to have the comparison for all of our elementary schools, not just a few examples. Title I, going from 45% to 55%, that's certainly a big leap up. So again, I would want to see the, what schools we believe would be impacted. And I understand that we have to divide up the money and we have to do it at Poe Middle School for the first time. We have a middle school that's in that range. But let's see what the impact would be of going from 45 to 55. What schools would drop off at least for the coming year? And it, I don't know if that's the same nine schools that you mentioned are impacted this year, but anyway, that's the next step, too. I would like to see what schools would, would no longer be Title I if we went from 45 to 55 next year, you know, as projected, you know, because, of course, most of our schools are increasing their poverty rates. I will say that I do support the AARTs. Of course, I support the behavior intervention specialists as well. I think I'm probably going to support a number of the other items as well. Do we have a figure? I'll ask one question and then ask for a go-back. Do we have a figure on what the price would be if we, on the living wage, if we mirrored the county at 15, 14?
I'd just like to clarify a point about Title I schools. So there are no changes for the 1920 school year. All schools who are currently in Title I will remain in Title I. The 55% threshold takes effect in fiscal year '21.
I do understand that, yeah. But I'm looking for a projection, then, of what schools would be impacted if we did it.
The nine schools I had mentioned.
So the nine schools are the, oh, those are the nines that would be impacted by going from 45 to 55?
In fiscal year '21.
In fiscal '21. All right. Okay, thank you.
As a next step, can you list those nine schools?
Yeah, let's just list them. I tried to write them down quickly, but, yeah.
All right. All right. Mr.?
Can I respond?
You had one question, Sandy.
The living wage. The 1514, which is what the county is including now, would cost an additional $89,000 or .1 million to the school operating fund. So the 1527 that's costed on Page 5, that would go down about $100,000. And the food services fund would be impacted by $390,000. But they would absorb that within their regular fund that doesn't require any local funds. So it would be a savings of about $100,000 if we went with what the county said.
All right. We have Ms. Kiesgum, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate this report, and I want to say my priorities also center around student, providing direct services to students. I am particularly taken by the recent reports regarding restraint and seclusion. And so I'm, I know that it's a time crunch in terms of being able to tell us what that is going to cost, but I think it's a little bit difficult to be able to really answer some of these questions without knowing that. I see that as a crisis for us. There's, the community is very concerned about that. And so I hope that the five behavior intervention teachers, I certainly assume that would be part of the solution, but I also am concerned about only focusing on monitoring. I'm looking for best practices in a way to eliminate, if not, at a minimum, reduce significantly the use of those practices. We also have not received a full report on where it is most, where it is used, how it is used, who is using it. This board needs to hear exactly what we're dealing with, and then we need to go from there. So I would include that as a next step. And so that actually is my top priority, is understanding exactly how expansive that problem is so we can make some determination on what monies need to be put in place. I see, anticipate that includes a significant level of professional development, understanding best practices, figuring out how we interact with the community to correct. best practices, figuring out how we interact with the community to correct some of the really hurt and trauma that's been created by this. So that is the top priority for me. I also include in mind the nurses. We are woefully will not, are not within the appropriate ratios there, and providing better health for our students, I see, is helping a number of areas, including mental health. So I wanted to highlight those two. With respect to the AARTs, in my discussions with folks on the committee, I understand that there were also some other recommendations that we are not seeing. And so at some point, perhaps as a next step, I would like to understand, I know that there was a follow-on for this, but there were also other recommendations, and I'm trying to get to it in my email. I may have to come back to that because when you need something, you can't find it. So I'll come back to that. With respect to, with respect to the IAs, I definitely, that is also a priority for me. I can't imagine being in school all day, working full-time, and making less than $25,000. That is not a living wage. And I also would support making the living wage on par with the county.
Yes.
I had three seconds until.
You did. Good job. All right. So I have you, you want to go back, though?
Yes.
All right. All right. Next on our list is Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Palczek.
Well, thank you. Since I only have three minutes, could you put me on the go-backs list? With that said, on the movable walls, I, once we find out, we hear back from Mr. Plattenberg on when the best time for the board to make a decision on the movable walls, if it is, for example, you know, by the end of May, we could, we could have a motion to use a flexibility reserve to, to support, to having a movable walls to be worked on over summer. So there will be, there will be my advocacy as, as a next step, find out when the best time to make those decisions should be. And on the living wage, I, I mean, I think, I think Ms. Palczek and I were advocating from 1527 at the time we proposed this budget amendment. I'm not, I'm not at this point inclined to go back down to 1514. County may be doing 1514, but that doesn't mean we have to do exactly the same. I am, on the other hand, I am interested in seeing whether we can do even more, 1540 or $16. That's where I am at this point. I need to be able to do a little more study on the, looking at the numbers, how that's going to impact upon other, other budgetary amendments as well. On staffing standards, I would like to either have an opportunity to sit down with a staff member to be able to ask some detailed questions unless staff is willing to provide a detailed explanation of every single item in there for everyone's interest. Maybe that's, that may be a better way to go. I'm looking at what's provided on slide number 23. I, I am still proud of being a person pretty good with the numbers, but it's hard to tell just looking at the slide what that means. I would like to have a greater detailed explanation of the slide. For follow-on motion, I think Ms. Heinz, or was it Ms. Evans, or Ms. Heinz mentioned about comparing with other professions requiring similar education and training rather than just comparing with other districts, you know, teachers from other school districts? Because, you know, in fact, I was having a conversation with a, with a parent yesterday that, you know, a parent is trying to sort of give, you know, advice to a child in school when the child enters college, you know, you know, which, what to study, et cetera. You know, first thing that parents said to me was, "Mr. Moon, is it true that in the United States, you know, we do not respect, we do not pay teachers as well as other countries and other professions?" You know? I try to defend our, our salary compensation and benefit system as much as possible, but that is the perception out there, you know, unless we treat our.
Mr. Moon, your three minutes are up.
Three minutes. Just put me on the go-back list. Let me, could, could you let me finish this sentence?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, you know, unless, unless we do really treat and, and, and the respect teachers just like other professionals are being treated, we're not going to be able to attract the top, very best students from college to come to education.
And you had a question in there, right?
There was a statement.
No, there was this question from Mr. Plattenberg, right? About the walls?
About the walls.
About the movable walls.
Yes. Yeah, but.
Timing.
Mr. Plattenberg, you mentioned the, you want to expand upon that answer, or do you want to wait till Thursday to give us that answer?
Let's do it as a next step. I heard it as a next step to find out when the appropriate time would be for us to bring forward this issue of the flexibility reserve. We'll have that.
Because I don't think, I don't think we can wait until July 31st.
Understand.
Right.
Understand. We understand.
All righty. We now have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Palczek.
Thank you. Following up on what Mr. Moon just said, I absolutely agree that we should be providing the funding immediately for the movable walls. I'm sorry that as a board, it didn't occur to us or to the superintendent that we could have just simply used our third-quarter funding and directed the set-aside of $600,000. But we certainly do have the school board flexibility reserve that we could go ahead and, tonight, just say, put that as a set-aside. Mr. Plattenberg can go ahead and order and begin a plan for installation. And when we end up doing the year-end budget review, we can replenish the eight million, whatever the $600,000 is coming out of the eight million for the school board flexibility reserve. So I, I think that's a, an essential priority. And Ms. Kofax, I appreciate that this is something you've been taking a lead on. And so I hope tonight, we can go ahead and, and speak to that directly and have a direct course of action. In terms of everything else that's been presented, I'll try to start at the macro level and go down, and I'll, I'll end up needing my, another three-minute turn, I'm sure. I'm, I'm very appreciative that with 12 board members, we all need to bring our various passions. We, we then have the ability to sort of dig deeper into certain areas and then hopefully help inform each other and the superintendent on these things. What I'm struggling a little bit with this listing here is that it's one thing that we bring forward our areas of focus, but I think what I was hoping, Dr. Braybrand, is that you were then going to provide sort of a lens of this is mission-critical. These are things that kind of in a tiered approach of strategic investment. These are, these are high priority. These are the ones I think we could have a little bit of time that we can wait on. And I only say that because right now, where things will have like the little orange circle, this goes into the strategic plan of student success. Well, we can put it into a budget bucket, which is what I think that signals there. What it doesn't necessarily signal is what is the biggest mission-critical priority out of all of these areas that can certainly be identified within our strategic plan? So I think there's a difference there. So, for example, we were talking about custodians, and that it could be, custodians and trades position could be $36 million if we did it to the APPA standards. And yet, Ms. Keys-Gamar, I want to thank you for bringing up school nurses. If we went by what is the staffing standards of best practice for school nurses, it should be one per 550, and we're at one per 3,000. So what are our priorities? Even in the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is one student nurse per 923 students. Again, Fairfax County Schools, we're at one per 3,000. So I just feel at a macro level, we've got to have an appreciation for that. And if I ran out of time, I'll just say this. Dr. Duran, thank you for your proposal. I am 1,000 percent behind the idea of, for $100,000, we can get two school nurses in our community schools, and I think that's a great first step.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin, and I have you on our, on our list for a go-back. Ms. Palczek, followed by Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and we'll probably need to go back. A lot of motions up here, budget amendments. So first of all, just want to follow up on some of what was said earlier by my colleagues. 100 percent support your advocacy, Tammy, sorry, Kofax, on taking the funds from current reserves and then replenishing those with end-of-year. I think that seems like the, the speediest and most appropriate manner. So happy to support that. Thank you for doing that. And, and as well with some of what we've discussed, I appreciate your advocacy and your partnership on the living wage. Mr. Moon, it does look like we're in a few different places. I did want to let my colleagues know, I sent you some additional information. Unfortunately, it took a little bit longer than I expected to get, but it, it does show, A, that the, the, the living wage that we're looking at would also start to fix the scales. I know we were hoping that that would have been done by this year. Unfortunately, it was not. Some of the, the living wage, the first steps from last year were flat. And so now there are small increments, five to 10 cents to start to fix the scale, which will hopefully be fully fixed next year. So yes, to reduce the compression at the bottom of the scales that, that happened due to the increase in the living wage for last year. I'm with Mr. Moon in that I'm glad the county went a little bit farther, but knowing that just the MIT living wage is now at, I believe, more than $17 an hour, and that we have, you know, had requests to start to look at how do we get to what's truly in Fairfax County a living wage? So I do hope we can have support for at least the 1527. I also, along with Mr. Moon, will be looking to see if we can do a little bit more. 1550 is only, I believe, another $80,000 to also decompress the scale for the operating fund, and also means that we would decompress, get a little bit closer, and I'd be willing to look at, you know, that funding coming from some of the trades positions or elsewhere. I just think these are the people in our county that do work tirelessly in our schools or with our kids, and the fact that many are not able to eat. We've heard from some of them who then go to the principals and say they're really struggling to get by. So, you know, these are our county employees. I do hope we can find a way to support them. Happy to have further conversation about that. Professionalism, also 100 percent agree, we need to compare our teachers, start to think about comparing them to other employees at the same area. I think not valuing and not paying and not seeing our teachers as professionals is part of what we've been struggling with in, in public education. I think I'm running out of time. And then I will ask Mr. Plattenberg for information on the proposed, these were proposed trades positions for this year, to help us see what is critical and what can maybe perhaps be put off, you're here, for future years of the, of the several positions that were, that you brought forward. I'm gonna, I know I'm gonna have to come back.
I got you on the next step.
All right. And the other last thing I did send, it was a bit late to be included in the package, a follow-on motion to look at language interpreters. I've heard from special ed teachers, I've heard from parents, principals, that our language interpreters and our staffing and our pay is not adequate. We don't have them available for IEP meetings, we don't have them available for discipline meetings. And so I do hope that we start to look at how we can address that moving forward.
All right. Mr., the question, was it a question or a next step for Mr. Plattenberg? Next step?
It can be next step or when I come back, if you want to share it.
Okay. All right. All right. We'll do it, your next step then. I mean, we'll do it the next time you speak. I think that will work best. Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Ms. Kofax. So I guess what I'd like to do is just spend a little bit of time talking about the restraint and seclusion placeholder, because I agree with other comments that have been made at the table, that if we look at this list, this is really the crisis that we have in front of us. I, I totally agree that we need to focus on getting in to what we can do immediately to provide some respite for, first and foremost, those teachers that are in those classrooms struggling, and also to those, those students and parents so that they can, we can restore some trust with those families that are, that frankly have had some pretty horrific experiences in our schools. So I would like, as a next step, and hopefully we can have something soon, to go well beyond the monitoring and reporting that's described here in the presentation tonight, to, to come up with, I would suggest maybe there's some sort of rapid response team that could be deployed when the principal or a classroom teacher is experiencing difficulties so that we can bring to bear immediately the resources that are needed to, to help a situation that is difficult. Because what we've heard from the public testimony is repeated traumatic events. And so that, that's, I guess that's my first request of you, Dr. Braybrand, is to turn the tremendous talent that we have in our system to addressing immediately a problem. I also think that with regards to the movable walls, boy, why, you know, why are we waiting now to talk about using funds immediately to start addressing this issue? It was a crisis the moment the terrible event happened, and now we're talking about using reserve funds and then replenishing the reserve. I don't disagree necessarily with what Mr. Moon's suggestion is, is that, you know, let's, let's get the proposal from the board, but I guess it seems to me that's an obvious, the obvious answer is, well, let's fix the problem. I'm not going to talk about all of the other things on the list here, but I will say that, you know, in the past, we've levied fees on our families at schools for things where fees didn't exist before. And I know this set-aside of six million and so dollars was intended for staffing, but this, those fees go to directly impact our parents and our families. And I think that we ought to be able to juxtapose these dollars with those dollars, because I think that our parents would appreciate if the school system, when if they, if there's a little extra money in the budget, thought about those parents first. So that's all I've got.
All right. Mr. Wilson, thank you.
If I could?
Yes, please, Dr. Braybrand.
I'm fully prepared to have Ms. Johnson bring to you Thursday, not just what the, the number is for the budget, but to begin to give you some of the detail that I think the board would want. Just like we did a sort of a mini, a set of mini presentations today, we could be prepared on Thursday to do a mini-session around the restraint and seclusion in context of what the budget amendment or the, the amount of money we would be looking for, for that budget amendment. So we could have that before we got into additional questions or dialogue, if that suits the board.
I think that would be good with, with the status of where we're at from the earlier discussion as far as the independent assessment and the task force, correct?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go back to Ms. Schultz, and then we'll have Mr. McElveen.
Okay. I have several different things. On slide 20, the minority student achievement is tied to this. My question is, what has the needs-based staffing done for minority student achievement or students in poverty? Because my recollection is, when we have the student achievement goal report presented to us every year, the minority student achievement gap is all the way at the bottom, and actually the students with disabilities gap, which I don't see any, any accommodation here for students with disability, that the achievement gains have not been moved by, by needs-based staffing model. Project Momentum has worked and worked tremendously well, but that's identifying the needs of the children in the classroom and the needs of that teacher to drive the dollars to the specific classroom to affect the student achievement at the classroom level, rather than applying a cookie-cutter model across the entire division as if, you know, a magical number below which we try to drive class size based on my. number below which we try to drive class size based on minority or socioeconomic status somehow drives achievement. And it doesn't, and it hasn't, and I'm not aware of any goal report that's ever been presented to us that shows that our needs-based staffing model, which is, you know, I don't know, the last 20 years, hundreds of millions of dollars, and we're not affecting minority student achievement. So I'd like some tie to an explanation of why we're doing this. I agree with Ms. McLaughlin, although I don't understand why the 100,000 some odd dollars on the nurse on Slide 21 is proposed to come from our budget. If nurses are funded by the county, then nurses should be funded by the county. I don't understand why on this model, all of a sudden, it would, we would shift the model and come from ours. Slide 23, if you could bring that up just briefly, that also has the, you know, Slide 23, that has the formula for the needs-based staffing, where we're driving down class size based on FRM. But there's nothing that associates those smaller class sizes with student achievement. Slide 27, if you could, please. Slide 27, in particular, I met with the Services Support Employment Association, Employees' Association, and in particular, I noticed on trades, you're asking for 282 trades personnel. This is one of the reasons I've had the support for our CTE program, and not concentrating it only at academies, but expanding it. They said that 40% of our trades, our currently employed trades personnel are slated for retirement within 10 years. I don't know how you could get 282. So I would like us to propose a grow your own. You're doing grow your own with teachers, on Teachers for Tomorrow, we need support personnel for tomorrow. And I would like us to celebrate kids who are graduating, going into the trades, just as much as we celebrate kids going to college or to, you know, getting an academic or athletic scholarship. And the problem is, we're not, we don't have, I used to go to the trades graduation, we don't even have that anymore, because we don't have enough kids going into the apprenticeship programs. So I don't know how we would possibly fill that. On the flexibility reserve, I'd like to know how much is left, because it's my understanding, we've spent quite a lot of the flexibility reserve, and you still have to refill it. I was the only person on this board that voted no to the third quarter budget review. It was for expressly this purpose, is we're talking about money coming out of the flexibility reserve into other things, and we're not paying attention to things like, you know, you want to adjust the construction and put in locks, or whatever we want for the movable barriers. We should have done that at a third quarter flexibility reserve. We should have handled our legal bills of a third quarter flexibility reserve. Instead, we sloughed it all off into staffing reserve for the successive year, and I need to go back, because I've got a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm sorry I didn't have it up there. I had it on my phone, there was something wrong with the machine. So thank you, I have you on the go-back list. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. So in the intervening months since we've passed our advertised budget, this $6 million figure has been in question, just in terms of what would be left. Are we certain at this point that this is going to be what we're working with?
Yes, I mean, we included the staffing initiative of $6 million in the proposed budget as funding for the school board to be able to fund staffing initiatives.
Okay. So I agree with Mr. Moon on the living wage piece. I don't think we fall to the least common denominator, which is what some folks have suggested. I think we stand firm where we are. Another question I have is on, I've heard from a number of hourly employees who are contracted for part-time, but then they end up working full-time hours, 40 hours a week, and they do not, they are not eligible for the same benefits and everything else. My assumption is that that is not a big, big group, but I would be, I know some of them work here in Gatehouse and elsewhere, and I have been hearing from them, and I would like, as a next step, to hear what it would cost for them to get on full-time contracts and be benefits-eligible. I'm in full support of Ms. Starnak-Kofax's effort on the walls. I agree with colleagues that this should have been dealt with sooner. And on the seclusion and restraint, I understand we're being brought something on Thursday. I would be grateful to understand why that would be ongoing costs as opposed to one-time expenditure, and I assume that will be presented, because I do want to preserve as much as possible in this $6 million quote-unquote staffing placeholder for that specific purpose. Thank you.
Okay, now we will go back to the go-backs. And Karen Keis-Gamar is the first on that.
But thank you. I thought there was somebody before me. Okay. I will start with what also was, what I received was also considered in the committee with respect to the AARTs. And of course, it's not in front of me. But let me, let me start with Title I. There were some comments about the numbers not reflecting, we haven't had improvement, but we've had new staffing. I would caution this board with that type of analysis, as having someone that's gone into a lot of Title I schools, we have to measure children where they start. And when you compare where they are, where they are able to rise to in comparison to other students, we may not be looking at apples-to-apples, because those children haven't had the same advantages. So I certainly wanted to mention that. On my go-back, Ms. Schultz, I also had something I'd like considered whether we need to look at a special education staffing formula as well, because I've heard some concern about, you know, staffing being reduced, but we're, we've also seen more needs in particular categories. And so as a next step, I'd like some explanation as to how we can make sure we are actually addressing those needs, and whether we need to consider a staffing formula, additional staffing formula that goes by what we need. Because, for example, there has been, well, I'm using up my time. Okay, so I'm also concerned about raising the percentage of FRM for the Title I. I too am concerned about, I think we really need to begin to look at what needs are being addressed in those schools. I know, I know what I see when I go in these schools, right? I know that we have a much higher percentage of students that may have experienced trauma, that may, that have, English is not their first language, et cetera. And so the needs are just so much more significant, and when we're in this analysis, I don't think we can do that in a vacuum. And so perhaps as a next step, as we're looking at what we're doing with Title I, and we also need to look at what those needs are in those particular schools. I will, I can't get off the next thing I need, and so just give me another go-back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Ms. Evans.
Could you come back to me, please? I need to look some things up, thank you.
Okay. Then we have Mr. Moon.
Okay, I am still trying to understand, Ms. Burden, what you said about having to, having to add another step, step number 24, if we add 1% MSA. I just feel that, I just feel that you could still give 1% without creating another step, and just to follow those, that particular group of teachers until they eventually retire. I mean, that does not, that does not require us to have another step for all their, all their teachers in the lower steps to eventually get to 24 as well. I just don't see it that way. So that's, that's one, since I don't want, I don't want you to use on my time, just think about that. And the next one is, going back to my budget follow-on motion, number one, is you gave a Montgomery County and Arlington and Fairfax, and Ms. Burden, you gave us a total compensation package number of 122, 118, and 117. I mean, am I correct for the teachers, those positions? What are you looking at, what were you looking, were you looking at average teacher compensation package, or what are you looking at? What were you looking at?
It comes straight from the WABE guide. In the back of the WABE guide, it includes an average salary calculation, which is literally every division's.
So if you say average, average teacher compensation, instead of median point or midpoint, some school districts may have more experienced, many more experienced teachers, and that would bring up the average? Do you have, do you have enough information to see whether that's the case or that's not?
We, the WABE guide includes BA Step 1, MA Step 1, maximum, an average teacher salary, which is total number of, the total payroll for teachers divided by the total number of.
But that's going to all depending upon.
Also a middle.
Okay.
calculation.
If you could also give us a middle calculation?
You can do a middle.
Because I want to see upper to upper, you know, comparison.
Yeah, but you know, it's not really going to change the picture that much, because...
Another, another question, I'm running out of time. Another question that I have is, if you, you stopped with a Fairfax as number three, if you could include just a couple more school districts, especially, I want to see Louden and Prince William.
We have the full complement. She just mentioned the top three.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know whether I can go back on the second go-back list.
Yes, we'll put you on the next time around. Ms. Evans, are you ready yet?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay, then it's Ms. McLaughlin.
Don't start the clock. I believe Mr. Moon had two really good questions that actually could get answered by staff before I ask mine.
Mr. Moon?
First, our members are prepared to give me answers.
And if we're not prepared right now, just like school board members are taking time, we can take time and get back, either later this evening or by Thursday. Ms. Burden, do you want to just wait?
I think I have the program.
Let me, let me just try on the step part, and Ms. Burden, tell me of my translation of what she's saying. You have folks on step 23, okay? If you give an MSA there, you have people who are going to move from step 22 in this budget to 23, right? They're already going to get, as they move up a step, right, additional salary. And, right, they were going to get a, I guess that's why Mr. Moon's getting complicated, because he's thinking, well, that 1% MSA would be applied on that step. But, but the difference...
No, they would, you're headed down the right direction. They, the people, this costing is based on 783 people who will not get a salary increase without the 1% bonus. But if you just add 1% to step 23, not only would those 783 get an additional 1%, but the...
How many?
22?
Yeah.
800 and some that are on step 22, that were already getting the step increase from going to 22, 23, will now get an additional 1%.
And the 1% is embedded in that step? That's, that's your point.
Because they are already getting, already a market scale adjustment plus step increase from 22 to 23. They are not entitled to another 1%, which should only be given to those at the top of the scale, otherwise would not get salary enhancement.
Which is why you have to add a step 24.
I don't think we have to add step 24.
But you could add 23B.
They can be, they can be basically phased out as a separate group, not as additional step to be added to.
Now we'll go back to Ms. McLaughlin. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Chausse. I really appreciate following Mr. Moon again, second time, because I have the very same concern. Dr. Braybrand, it'd be my understanding that this is not uncommon in the school division, including even at central administration, maybe even among leadership team members. At some point, the longer you work in a system, you're going to hit your ceiling. And there's no more steps, you just hit the ceiling. But the MSA helps towards your retirement, a bonus does not. And I want equity for all of our employees, so this notion of directing the board that we now have to create a step 24, I just want the board to know, I'm, I'm very much with Mr. Moon and I think some others, who are saying, this isn't necessarily following a logical direction that we have to go. I just think the 1% MSA is appropriate, so maybe for our Thursday conversation, there's a little more clarity here. But no, I don't feel like we have to be driven toward a bonus, and I don't think that's, that's serving the equity. Going down very quickly...
I want, I want to clarify one thing.
No, no, sorry, unfortunately, I, I want, I definitely, like, write down what you're going to clarify, because when my time is up, I want you to clarify for me. But for my colleagues, the Title I funding for the AART, I can get behind that very much, I see the value add for that. The living wage at 1527, I do want to say what I've said before, we are one Fairfax, which includes one county, which includes all employees. So if we have to partner with the board supervisors going forward to do more on this living wage, we need to be doing it with the board supervisors, because everyone who works for the school system or county services works for the county. And I don't want to get above or behind, we need to be working together on that one. The BIT positions, definitely in support of that. The restraint-seclusion placeholder, I know we'll get more information, but anything we can do to address that concern is important. For the IA salary restoration, I think Ms. Keis-Gamar, you were the one who said it, our IAs work a full school day, just like our teachers. They're in a classroom, they're on their feet, they're engaging and instructing. And so I think we have to benchmark the percent of time that they're putting into those jobs to the teachers who instruct in the classroom, and then, yes, teachers go home and do lesson planning and grading and all of that. But we need to be benchmarking at what percentage of the, of the time is put into the classroom day, and, and more importantly, just reflecting the fact that they are delivering critical services to our students. Darned that Scott stepped away, so Ms. Burden, this becomes my question to you. And my colleagues, I want you to hear this, because I'm hearing this from the board supervisors. The county executive told the board supervisors at markup that they're looking at about an $80 million shortfall in their budget forecast for FY '21. If that's true, then while this $6 million is important for us to be looking at how we strategically fund issues, what I'm not hearing tonight, and I would really like to hear on Thursday, because Ms. Burden, I don't want to put you on the spot, but Dr. Ivey, since Scott stepped out, I'm putting it on your ears to make sure this gets answered, what is our fiscal forecast for FY '21 on the school side? If they're looking at 80 million on their side, what's ours going to look like? Because I do not want to find us spending $6 million this year, and then turn around and find we've got to cut tens of millions of dollars one year later. And I said this when we voted on the budget in February. So if there's time this evening, I would like another go-back, because I didn't get to everything, but I, I think we're at least having a great dialogue tonight.
Thank you. Next, Sandy, are you ready yet? Ms. Evans?
Sure. Yeah, I just sent everybody the question and answer on an issue involving Avid. I don't know if people have an opportunity to call it up, but I wanted to bring that to people's attention. Avid is such a great program, and I do want to see if we can do everything we can to support this program. I think staff has come up with, I had asked a question about it, but I think staff came up with a great idea that we might want to consider for a way to support our Avid schools that would be helpful for all of them. And so this would add a period for each of the Avid schools, so that they could better coordinate. So I just wanted to bring this to people's attention, and I will ask for, I will call around to see how people feel about this, because if we could scoot this into this budget, I think that that would be worthwhile. But because it's a new idea, it's a brand-new idea, maybe it's premature to do it now, but I wanted to raise it with everybody and bring it to your attention. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Belcheck.
Thank you very much. I will focus on three specific areas. Number one, I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Moon and Ms. McLaughlin for your support for the, the MSA. So I look forward to seeing how we can address that. And to be clear, and one question, I appreciate Ms. Heinz's question. My question is, how many years have these employees—it'll be different for some of them—how many years have some of them gone without an MSA? Right? My understanding is, while we've been doing the teacher implementation, we've only been able to do bonuses. So hopefully, we can get an answer to that, that as well, because—and if we can get what that means for them in their lifetime. I know that's a little bit longer question. Number two, I didn't get a chance to speak to this before, the restraint and seclusion. Very much look forward to seeing what that includes. I have a few main concerns I've heard and areas I wanna make sure get addressed. And number one, it's about regaining confidence, right, from our families. I think that, that's been lost. And so whether it comes to very basic things, such as how we communicate with families, how we provide them the information they need, how we provide, and for me, I think training principals and staff at the school is critical, because they're the ones on the ground every day. The kind of support we're providing, including IAs. I know we heard from one individual who spoke about the need for additional support for ATS devices, for the communication devices for students. So I would really like to see—I know that our staff is looking into how to improve that. But if we could see for this year, for this budget, an initial investment and where we feel we need to start to address that, whether that means IA support, parent support, training for parents, teachers, et cetera, I would like to see something included for that for this year. And then finally—
Belcheck, that's a follow-on mo—you, a next step?
Yeah. I guess the next step, as we're looking at restraint and seclusion, to start to address support for ATS. Right now, I can't tell you what it stands for, but it's the—
Systemic Technology.
Thank you. Systemic Technologies—services?
I guess.
Supports. I know that's critical as a language teacher. Like I said, you know, the more we can help students and their families be able to communicate and staff, the better off they will be. And then finally, for Mr. Plattenberg, because I don't know that you have that tonight, when it comes to trades, the trades positions, but—and then also, if you can, for the custodials, if you can give additional details on how and why those specific positions were presented so that as we look at this budget, we can, we can figure out what is most critical for next year. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I have Ms. Heinz and Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. So on needs-based staffing and the argument or the question, whether it makes any difference, I—
Sorry, Ms. Heinz. Are you able to tell us tonight how many years staff have gone without an MSA? Or is that a follow-on? Or a next step? Sorry. I apologize.
So what I can say about that, so we can look at those numbers. So two years ago, when we implemented the, started enriching the teacher scale so that we could raise our teacher scale so that we were within 95% to 105% of the market, we started giving bonuses to those individuals who were at the top, who wouldn't have received anything, because we built the MSA into the teacher enhancement. Prior to that, and I, I don't remember which board member shared, I believe it was Ms. McLaughlin, that prior to that, our employees who are at the top of the scale, if no MSA was given, then those employees across the board weren't giving any additional type of compensation. So there were no bonuses, there were no additional dollars. We felt at that time that because there were individuals who were at the top of the scale, who weren't going to receive any kind of MSA because we built the MSA into the teacher enhancement, that we wanted to provide something for those individuals, which is why we went with the bonus route. So for, for us to look back, we can certainly find the numbers, but it would have only been for a two-year period. Prior to that—
There was nothing.
There was nothing, because all employees across the system, if you were at the top of the scale, you received no additional dollars, unless there was some kind of MSA.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Then we go back to Ms. Heinz?
All right. Thank you. So on needs-based staffing and the question, whether it makes a difference, I, I guess just a couple of things. We, we base our needs-based staffing on family income, not on minority status at all. We believe that it makes a difference for our kids with English as a second language and kids who, you know, traditionally may need more support. But we do know that as it is a best practice to have smaller class sizes with greater needs, we know that you also need to have strong instruction, right? And that the needs-based staffing provides the conditions for responsive instruction like Project Momentum to make the difference. And it's my understanding that Project Momentum schools are, all of them, benefit from needs-based staffing. So I don't think they would be able to produce the results that they do without the extra staffing in the building. So a couple of the things. I agree with Mr. Moon that I think, if we get a little more analysis, but that the step 23 cohort, that group of people, I think maybe we could just treat them as a separate cohort and take care of them and make sure that we're giving them what they need in their retirement. If we can do that, would be great. I agree with the comments about restraint and, restraint and seclusion and what we'll be looking for. Thanks to Mr. Marty Smith for mentioning that we're actually, we'll be talking about more than reporting and, and that, that we'll also be talking about how we make sure we have best practices and communication with families. I think it's very important, and I'm sure you've thought of this, that we hear from the teachers in the classrooms, you know, because they have a different perspective on this, and we need to make sure we're understanding what they need and that we're providing what they need. The only other thing, and I, I wanted to get back briefly, Mr. Moon, I don't know if we asked this as a next step yet. On page 16, on—we talked about teacher salaries and where we want to be in this question. I guess I might ask the next step as this, which is, are there other school systems in the country who use an analysis of, of teacher salaries, that benchmark teacher salaries against other professions that require the same preparation? So that would be my next step, is just to do a little—no, no time soon, but just as part of the research on 95 to 105 and whether we're where we wanna be, see if there are other models out there that, that benchmark teacher salaries against professional salaries in the area, because we know, in fact, that, those are the people that our teachers are competing with for housing, right? And that's the biggest chunk of, of someone's expense in Fairfax County. So, thank you.
Okay. Then we have Ms. Schultz and Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Okay. So I said minority and socioeconomic disadvantaged students, and that's true. We've had a flat goal student achievement report year after year. On the $80 million shortfall on the county side, I mean, we're talking about $6 million potential windfall from the state, but if the county has an $80 million shortfall, are, are they making any adjustments to their budget for this year? Are we making any adjustments? I mean, we're spending money that we think we have, but we're—we may be hit with bad news on the county side, and I think we have to prepare. On the, on the restraint and seclusion, I, I don't understand why we're not prioritizing that at the top. Like, I don't understand why we don't just—I mean, we're, we're, we're talking anecdotally a lot about things that people care about, but this is something that has a magnitude that I can't put a dollar on. And if there is extra money, it, it, that's what it's gotta go to. I, I mean, I don't—I'm not entirely sure what exactly—I wasn't a participant in the earlier conversation. I was out, so I'm not sure how we're getting to here. I do wanna—I am gonna be adding a budget question that I had asked in earlier years, which is the K through six class size of every classroom. When I had done it earlier, I just wanna highlight once again that at that time, we had 1,078 elementary classrooms that were sized 20 and under, that represented 26.3% of our class sizes. There were 767 classrooms under 20, representing 21,830 students, but there were 1,026 classrooms that were over, that were over eight, over either the K through, the K through six, K through three, or the 30 and above for the upper grades. And we're talking tens of thousands of students, 18,630 students in oversized classrooms. And so if our, our goal is student achievement, we have gotta be talking about a way that we have a measurable relationship between how we staff and what student achievement is. And I don't, I don't know that necessarily the stuff that's been presented to us today addresses how we staff equals student achievement. And student achievement for, for all students, whether they're advanced academics, whether they're in a Title I, the, the bottom line is, is—and, and I appreciate my colleague, Ms. Kees-Gamara, also the student growth progression model. You know, how students progress, not just, you know, a high-stakes achievement test, but how they're progressing. And I don't necessarily see that. So if I don't see restraint and seclusion at the top of the, whatever money we have, I'm probably not gonna support it, because I think that that has to be our number-one priority. And I don't hear us talking about what's priority out of all of these wish lists.
Okay. The next is Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. And as far as the priorities of this board, it's my understanding that tonight, we are focused on two things. One is getting additional information, talking about priorities. And I've heard just about every one of my fellow colleagues raise concerns and set as a priority, the restraint and seclusion. So I don't think that that is a question amongst us, that we all share a common concern of making sure that we address the needs of these students and their families and approach those needs using the best practices available and not focusing on the monitoring and reporting that was initially put on the slide. Additionally, I do think it would be helpful to have a better understanding of the review of those services that would be impacted in fiscal year '21 if we change the Title I threshold by 10 points, as well as I would like to hear a bit more about how we can have a plan of action to address jointly with the Board of Supervisors, the needs on nurses in our highest-needs areas. And so I think that's something that would be a follow-on motion, perhaps, Ms. McLaughlin, you would be interested in doing of collaboratively, working between the boards to address nursing needs for those high-needs areas. And since we were talking about restraint and seclusion, I think it actually opens up a broader topic, which is, is it time for us to take—and this would be a follow-on motion, not a budgetary one necessarily—but is it time to take a fresh look at how we are providing services to exceptional students with disabilities? And whether or not we need to look at those programs in a more comprehensive way to make sure that we are continuing to address the needs of these students and their families with the best pedagogy, with the mindset that we want to eliminate the achievement gaps at an accelerated pace, and just being much more reflective in providing the best possible services to these students. But that would be a follow-on motion. Thank you.
All right. You know what I'd like to do? I, I would like to take a five-minute break for staff, because this is a three-hour session, and I, if you guys would like to take a five-minute break, I know it, I, some of us around the table would too. So we will start back with the third round of go-backs. I'm hopeful, you know, the five-minute break will take us to more or less—yeah, just one sec—and to about, you know, 8:40. And I intend to cutoff then, because we do have another work session. So we'll have a third round of go-backs, and we'll end in approximately one hour from now.
Just as you're wrapping up for this last part, I want feedback from you all, either individually or through this discussion. Do you like this process? Do you like the way we're doing it? You know, you shared about, well, I should just bring everything done. Part of this is—
It's not what we said.
All right. Whether I would have already made decisions from the amendments and follow-ons, recommendations, part of this is listening to the board to see where your priorities are and partnering together. I wanna know whether you're liking this process. This is the way I like to do it. We've spent a lot of time preparing this, but I want feedback, whether this process, as you sit here, is working for you or not, because this is the kind of process that I want to ultimately get us to a budget that the board can support and the feels good about. So I'll be looking for that feedback individually or collectively, as you desire. Thanks.
Break. Yes. We'll take a five-minute break. Reconvene right around 7:45. Sure.